Okay, it's 5:30. Call the meeting to order.
Mayor Beeson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Stover.
Here.
Commissioner Spillman. Commissioner Tweedy.
Present.
And Commissioner Warren.
Hey, if you guys would join us for the invocation, Mr. Schwartz.
Let's pray. Our Father, we're so thankful for the wonderful day you've given us. We're thankful for your goodness to us and we're thankful for the right to freely assemble in this country and self-governance. And I just pray that you bless this commission, watch over them, take care of them, give them wisdom. We thank you for our workers, our city workers. I pray that you bless each one who finished out this week. I pray especially to be with our communities. We come together and just celebrate being a community for all these years. I just pray that it would be safe, it would be fun, and I just pray that you'll take care of us this evening as we do your business. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in reciting the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any additions or deletions?
No, ma'am, there's not.
I may we approve the agenda as written.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, consent agenda.
Would you like me to read through them?
Yes, please.
So item number one is to approve the October 7th of 2025, regular meeting minutes as written.
Okay, on that one, I'd like to amend.
Okay.
At our last meeting, after the meeting, it was adjourned, we had a citizen offer to fight an elected official outside. I want it noted in the minutes. I would also like it noted that any further behavior like that will be considered a threat and that police action will be taken against them.
Okay, and I'll put that under comments from the audience, under that section of where we spoke.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Item number two is notice of public hearing date set for October 27th, 2025 at 12:00 PM to consider an application be submitted to the Kansas Department of Commerce for Small Cities Community Development Grant Funds for Wilson Park Improvements. And item number three is to approve employee health insurance renewal for the 2026 plan year. So when we do approve this, we do want to approve with that amendment to the minutes.
So I want to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the amendment to the meeting minutes from October 7th, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Three.
Under New Business City Manager Department, item number one is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to approve updates to the city's current statutory, budgetary, and financial planning policies.
So, I'm all writing the budget book every year. It gives me a great opportunity to go through all of our policies and review those. In doing so, I found just a few updates that needed to be included in the policy. First of which is the budget calendar in there. And that is simply to update it with what the state has done. So it synchronizes if you're not exceeding the R and R with if you are exceeding the R and R. So one budget calendar. So that's all that matters. The debt policy revisions is primarily cleaning up the language to reflect Canton State statute. Previously, we did not refer to that statute, but this is a place where that statute never in there. And then on the reserves, as I stated Friday at our work session, we've really never really had the resources to even have a reserve policy. And so I feel like we're in a pretty good place to put those guidelines in and kind of establish a framework there. So that is, that is the only changes I would recommend.
I think you do a wonderful job, Jenny, with you and your two helpers. And I know that Jay always talks about 17 years ago when he came in, that the rollover was $10,000, which is scary, which is scary. And, and now it's what, it's 6 million?
We rolled over like 2.3 million.
Oh, was it? I don't know where I got 6 then. Maybe I saw the actual budget for it. But anyways, that's a huge improvement and kudos to you and Randy and for being considered with people's taxes.
What's our bond rating and debt rating right now?
So, it's like a negative stable.
At least it's in the A column.
Any other questions?
I move we approve the resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to approve updates to the city's current statutory budget and financial planning policies.
Second. Motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jenny.
Item number two is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to add Christmas, oh, sorry, I'm skipping one. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to approve the revised purchase purchasing policy, giving the city manager authority to approve purchases up to $20,000.
Same thing here, reviewing policies. You guys brought it up a couple months ago. I didn't look at this one specifically. So the only change here would be to raise Randy's approval level from 10,000 currently to 20,000 without permission.
What that does is 10,000, back when it was put in, purchased a lot more than it does now. A lot of things go up over that 10,000, even if it's $11,000, it goes over a lot now and we have to have special meetings, call special meetings to get this approved. This will just put it in Randy's.
And a lot of those items are general maintenance items.
Right.
I did try to look back to when that policy was put in place, and I don't know that they even had a policy, honestly, prior to 2016, but 2016 was the last one I found and then we stepped off.
If I remember right, it was around $5,000 before that.
Okay, yeah.
You got a question?
It's been a while.
If I may, is there control on that between, let's say, capital expenditure increase versus expenses, like other policies?
Yeah, so any capital, is it a contract or something, or are we changing or altering personnel?
I make a motion we approve a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to approve the revised purchasing policy, giving the city manager authority to approve purchases up to $20,000.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number three.
Item number three is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to add Christmas Eve as an official city holiday beginning in 2026.
Marla?
Do you want me to come up there? This is something that we have been trying to keep up with federal holidays. And we also looked at Christmas Eve. That is a day where we typically will work until about noon because it's time to go home and cook. And so that was kind of our idea, that that would be really beneficial to the employees and their families, that they could truly, especially when you get kids grown and you don't know who's going to whose house, just be nice. And we're trying also to kind of mirror the county, because we all have to work together with the land.
Right. And a lot of times, if you're hourly workers, they would have to take personal time to take that Christmas Eve off if they wanted off at noon, or they work till 3 o'clock. And working till 3 o'clock when nobody else is there, it's tough. And yeah, you're not getting a lot done. So it's, this makes sense.
Makes sense.
Department, sure department will still be on call, right?
And as a matter of fact, what is beneficial to them is that holidays, if you get a call on a holiday, those are the only days that it's automatically at a premium pay rate instead of straight until you earn a fine threshold. So it just sends a very good message.
Mr. Mayor, I may we authorize the city of Arkansas City to add Christmas Eve as an official city holiday beginning in 2026.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Carries. Thank you, Marla.
And thank you on behalf of everybody. I really appreciate that.
Item number four is a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to approve a quote from Power Play LLC in the amount of $306,500, along with the additional in-kind contributions from Public Works and Environmental Services for a total project cost not to exceed $326,500 for the installation of a new community splash pad in Wilson Park.
I know we specifically have a couple of people here just kind of wanting a short breakdown. I can give them the rest of it afterwards, but Randy, if you wouldn't mind, just.
Yeah. So, you know, basically, we've been trying to apply for grants here recently for splash pads, haven't been successful. After the walking trail project, we had that change in agreement with the state on that. We had some extra funds in the CIP left over from that, along with some other funds left over in the CIP from other things. We were able to determine that we could use those CIP funds, those excess CIP funds to get the splash pad built after all. So we went out and asked for proposals from several different companies. We got a proposal back from the Power Play Company for 306,500. The rest of the work will be done. There'll be some, we're going to close the street, we're going to, over there at Wilson Park.
Birch.
Birch Street, as is in the master plan for the park there. So there'll be some costs to hauling dirt there and put some curb in and that type of stuff. That's where that 15,000 comes in. And then there'll be some connections with water and that's where the 5,000 comes in.
And that'll be city employees doing that work.
Yeah. And this particular splash pad is a two-way pad. It's not a recirculating one. So there is some operating costs along with that each year. We've determined it would be approximately 12,600, about 5,000 in maintenance estimated, and then about 7,600 in water you see each year to operate it.
And then this, this kind of got lucky with this power play. They do them right off the shelf, basically.
Yeah, they have them on the shelf plant.
We could build it, we could build it, but they were able to do it immediate, right?
And the other, so this also have provisions for additional play equipment and things to be added later in the future. So they'll set it up to where if funds come available, we can add some different features to it, kind of change it up and keep it exciting for kids.
And one of the advantages to this is we don't have to hire a engineer to come in and design it, which I've seen some of the engineering costs, and I can't believe it's $100, $105,000 just to make the drawing and say, here's what you want.
Yeah. We've noticed here recently, just for a stamp, it's about $25,000 for an engineer stamp. That doesn't include the work and stuff.
So we actually saved about $100,000 with this group.
Yeah.
So the road closure is going to be between First and Second Street on Birch, right?
To the parking lot.
Yeah. It'll be basically the width of the old hospital lot there.
Right, okay. And it's 80 by 100, 80 foot by 100 foot? Is that what I thought it was?
Yeah, there's a site plan in the pocket, actually.
2,700 square foot splash pad, so it's pretty good size.
So 81 by 65 and a half.
What's our maintenance and upkeep on this, Randy?
Well, that's, our estimate is on it, and we've talked, we talked with Phil and some other cities, we estimate the operation and maintenance will be 5,000. And, you know, that's kind of over a period of time, but, you know, for a repair, we won't see much at first, but, and then water, we estimate water usage about 7,600 a year. That's, you know, that's the estimate there.
Are those jets replaceable from above ground versus having to dig them up?
Yeah, yeah, there'll be connectors within, you know, at the states and the different features will be able to just kind of plug in and plug out.
Any questions from the audience?
So is it kind of a pre-tappy, is that what it is?
No, it's not, it's construction, the pad will be poured and with the plumbing and all that in it. And then the different features will be added to it. And there'll be provisions for additional features in the future if we want to do that.
I just wanted to inquire about additions future on the project and ensuring the water meters and supplies setup is big enough for that to support that kind of work well.
Yeah.
And will it tie into, will that work tie into the program development?
Yeah, so there's already, there's already water mains and all that in that area there. So, yeah, all that is there. Well, it's supported a hospital.
Supported a hospital. Okay, is everybody's?
How, will this be on constantly or will there be buttons?
No, it'll, it'll, it won't be on constantly. It'll be kind of a, when they're there using it, it comes on or turns off. Yeah, I'm not exactly sure, but there'll be some type of something to turn on.
And what do we think our season's going to be?
I would say it's going to mirror the school season.
Right, probably end of school and then until August, September.
Labor Day and Memorial Day type.
Right, okay. All right.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to approve a quote from Power Play LLC in the amount of 306,500, along with additional in-kind contributions from Public Works and Environmental Services for a total project cost not to exceed 326,500 for the installation of new community splash pad in Wilson Park.
Second. I do have one comment question, real quick, sorry. This is to make it nice and easy for the traveler when they get it out there as well. This, to get this put into place, they said it'd take about a month. Is that right? Once, once, I mean, for the company to do all of the?
Yeah, I think that's what, Nick's been working with the power plant, but I believe that's what he.
I thought that's what he said on Friday. So we should be able to have this. If we get our work done, started in March, they start in April, we should be ready to go by the, by the end of school next year.
I would think, I think it'd be in service by the time the season ends.
Fingers crossed. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five is a resolution certifying legal authority to apply for the Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program from the Kansas Department of Commerce for Parks and Facility System Improvements.
So we're revising our previous grant application. The previous grant application was for playground equipment and splash pad. We've been successful in that twice now. So with pulling the splash pad out, being able to do that with existing funds, we're going to apply for the playground equipment again. And so Rosemary is here with Nansen Financial, and they've been helping us with the grant administration, and she'll walk.
Along with blocking them to put together a PER and cost in that for this application. So in the resolution, the total project cost is $785,910, with a grant request of $628,728. That will lead local dollars of $157,182. And of that, monies are coming from various funds with the city that they have allotted that to. So we have, commission is so inclined to consider this application, this resolution for the application, we would appreciate it.
Is VJ Wilkinson involved in this all?
Yeah, so VJ Wilkinson granted us $50,000. It's with the condition that we get the Seamy Wright grant. And then the remaining funds will come from that 130 that we did budget this year for park equipment.
So this is about the park equipment, getting new equipment.
Yeah, Timmy was showing a little bit of it there.
We have a good shot at this grant?
I would say yes.
Would you please?
I would like it very much, sir.
Heard that before.
Yes. They've done the application process a little bit different this year. And so as we're rolling with the punches, if you want to say, but I think this is, is a very good fit with everything that is going on in Wilson Park with the pickleball courts and the splash pad. I think it will show that the city's being very proactive to establish quality of life elements for their citizens to enjoy.
Good deal.
Is this grant considerably less than what we've asked for in the past?
Yes, because last time we had incorporated both the splash pad and the playground equipment together. So roughly, let's just say, $325,000 can be less at minimum.
Our chances are a lot better.
Yeah. And I do want to mention something that Commissioner Spillman had said probably a year ago when we were looking at this splash pad, is that the splash pad at one time was, what, a million dollars? And so it was a, it had mosaics, it had, I mean, just all kinds of bells and whistles. It was the Cadillac of splash pads. And we're, well, we probably need more of a used car here in Newark City right now to get this by. So I think that was a great idea and it's going to help us as well, so.
Well, I think this splash pad will meet the needs of the citizens and visitors to the community alike.
Right, so, okay. I make a motion for a resolution certifying legal authority to apply for the Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program from the Kansas Department of Commerce for Parks and Facilities Systems Improvements. Second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six is a resolution authorizing the Kansas Department of Commerce that funds, assuring, I'm sorry, let's start over. Item number six is a resolution assuring the Kansas Department of Commerce that funds will be continually provided for the operation and maintenance of improvements to the park system to be financed with Community Development Block Grant Fund.
So as, as the resolution states, there have been some cases in the past where people have taken the grant funds, they've built the project, and then they haven't operated and maintained it, and then they come back and say, we need more money to fix it up. So this is just assuring that you're going to operate and maintain the system of the playground equipment for the city. Monies have been set aside. While we don't expect the equipment to be, have to be replaced very soon, some of those monies could be set aside for future replacement of existing pieces or addition to those pieces that we put in.
Is this one of the things we have to certify to the commerce that every year that we are doing this?
Just this in the application. Yes, I'm sure if somebody came in five years and said, we want to take a look at your playbook, your rec, commission budget, and there's money set aside for playground equipment, we'll see that you are maintaining it. Obviously, if they go to Wilson Park and they see that it's being maintained, obviously, they know the money has been put to good use.
That being said, Mr. Mayor, I may we assure the Kansas Department of Commerce that funds will be continually provided for the operation and maintenance of improvements to the park system to be financed with Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Second, third. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, commissioners. And again, public hearing is Monday at noon here. Thank you.
City manager updates?
Okay, I don't have a whole lot this time, but we, several of, well, two commissioners, Commissioner Stover and Warren and myself and City Clerk Tiffany, we went to the LPM conference a couple weeks ago, and it was a really good conference. There was a lot of good information there, and I think we all learned quite a bit. And so we can share some of that stuff with you guys over the next month or so.
Yeah, I want to hear about independence.
Yeah, there's interesting things going on there.
Yeah.
There is a Purple Heart ceremony that you guys are invited to. It'll be after the Veterans Day Parade. I believe it starts at 1:00 and I believe it'll be at the Legion.
Right.
So residents is going to be getting a Purple Heart awarded. It's long, long overdue, so it'll be a nice ceremony. So I'm sure you can be there. Yesterday, we had a pre-bid meeting for the fire station. We had three contractors there. Gave them a chance to ask questions and all hear the same information as they work on their bids for the project. So we have a bid date due November 10th, so we'll have our bids back then and be able to kind of work through that and give you guys a recommendation on how to move forward with that project. I did reach out to Rural Development about, they have a loan program and grant program for community facilities. Of course, right now, the federal government's closed, so that bounces back. But the email that bounced back did say when they're, when they're back in business, they'll get back with us, so.
We already know what it's going to cost to rehab the department where they're at now, right?
It was a pretty good idea, yeah. And it was, it was pretty expensive, and that's why we went, wanted to take a look at what it would cost to build new. Not only was the expense a lot more than what we thought it would be, but then you have to deal with operations out of that facility. Those guys live there and work out there, and when you're trying to completely do all that. So if we can build new for, which we anticipate to be actually less, and then, or even if it's the same, I think we're still better off with new versus trying to look at what's over there. And it's just tired. Funding doesn't work in it, electrical's not, you know, that compliance, and it's just, it's hard.
Live this life.
Yes, it has. So the Cali County Economic Development Group is having a planning, a retreat on November 13th. So you guys should be getting some information on that, an invite to be part of that. It's, it'll be most of the day long, but it'll be set up to where you guys, if you need to, can come participate in when you need to and that type of thing. But it's kind of a strategic planning retreat, just to kind of bring the, go to the cities of the county and some businesses and that type of thing. Get direction on where we want to go as far as economic development operations are. Uh, November 13th.
And where? Where will it be?
I believe it's going to be at the Brown Center, I think. I'll, again, I'll get some more information once that invitation gets out, but just wanted to hit on your calendar so you're aware of it. And we did meet with Lang on Friday. They are moving along on their, their study of the land and how to develop it. They are going to be working with PC on a more specific plating for single family. That's kind of where they, all their research has shown that single family is the place to start there. And they look at bringing the development agreement to you guys here, probably around December, first part of December. So they're pretty excited about what they're finding and we're ready to kind of move forward. So they'll be working on how we can use RHID and other incentives to help get the development pulled together. And they're ready to move, and they got some good ideas, and they're excited to be working with you. So.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything?
I think it's great that we're seeing progress on everything that we've been talking about. The city government just goes on so long, it's so slow to get things done. It's finally happening.
Speaking of finally happening, I wanted to thank Curtis and the street department. They got lines, I don't know if anybody saw them, but the lines were done from radio lane all the way to the bypass, the yellow and the white, and the ones there at Walmart. And if you also walk, go around town, you'll see where they've done them outside of City Hall here, Steamy Joe's, College, a couple of places. They brighten up the article all the time. They brighten up for an article all the time, uh, so I just wanted to tell them thanks for that. Connie Moore and his group with Parks Department, uh, surprisingly, got rid of some trees, and nobody threw a big fit about it. But they were all, uh, they were all ground down. Uh, I think they've got them all set and ready to go for Arcalala, uh, I don't see any issues there, and, um, so we're excited about that. And I know that they also were involved heavily this month in setting up the electrical, um, and getting Arcalala ready, as well as the streets today with all the barricades and everything, so I wanted to let them know we appreciate that, and, um, I know sanitation's in for a heck of a week. They end up every morning at six A M. to, to clean up Arcalala and, and, and keep it going. And, uh, I just want everybody to, when you leave Arcalala Saturday, at the parade Saturday, look at the mess, and then drive by Sunday morning at eight A M., and you'll never know there was a, something went on except for the turtle circle and maybe the egg toss, uh, lines. So, um, those guys, they put, they do a lot of work every year to make Arcalala go off.
That's their running the regular route.
And, yeah, well, and then, and I know the Street Department and sanitation comes in at two A M. on Saturday morning, or Sunday morning, and I work through six, and, and like I said, you can't even tell it's done anymore, so, uh, big thank you to those guys.
And of course, P D, they're.
Well, absolutely, but.
Out and fours and, yeah, working over, kind of, making.
There, yes. Hey, but they're getting double time now.
Yeah.
I, I have a comment, I've, where, where my store is down on the South End, and, and I get to see the people on the bike path. We try to visit with folks because we're offering free water for them to fill their jugs and stuff inside. The comments that we're receiving is, I thank you to the city for providing such a nice place to be and feel that they're safe, so I just wanted to bring that up. Do we have an opening date, an official opening date for that?
No, we need to, though, I, I think it's real gone so long, took forever to get going, we need that, yeah, a big, uh.
Ribbon cutting and then just have the whole town ride the bike trail.
Shannon, can you work on that?
Yeah, I was, it's on my to-do list, and I wasn't sure if we were officially done, so I'll, I'll be set up for a ribbon thing.
Yeah.
Would you want to have it on your side of town?
Sure, I think it'd be great to have something on the south side of town.
Hey, I'm a south sider, so.
Make sure we have a, a large police force or a presence down there that day.
I'll even ride the bike trail.
There we go.
Not fast, but all right.
Uh, comments from the audience? And Tiffany, in lieu of, in lieu of last week, would you mind just, uh, going over the guidelines real quick? Lloyd, if you want mine, she's gonna read that real quick before we start your time.
Yeah, so before we do open the public hearing, um, for those that do wish to speak, please come to the podium and clearly state your name and your address.
That has to go in the minutes.
Hmm, um, and then if you would also kindly, I would like to remind you, um, to only address the commission, um, as a whole body, not to single any certain commissioner, staff, or audience member out, um, and please do so in a civil and respectful manner.
Thank you. Commissioner, Mayor, happy to be here one more time. I noted, as I'm sitting in the audience, that during the commission's, commissioner's comments, not one of you mentioned vote. I will mention vote, get out and vote, I will be early voting, thanks to the election board. I will given the realm of possibilities from the vote. Some people get voted in, some people get to stay. And you're saying the attorney can give you evidence of what happens a hundred days after the vote. People who are upset with their elected officials at any level can have a recall petition started. Realm of possibilities. The, um, commission needs to be aware of Shea's Rebellion, and Mayor, this is not a threat. Shea's Rebellion, the nation was new, and I challenge you to ask your city attorney for a two-hundred-word document detailing Shea's Rebellion and how the politics and the economy and the new republic is similar to the politics and economy in today's economy. Two hundred words is not much, he can get it out in a day or less. The, um, state of Kansas, according to Moody's, is one of twenty-two states in a recession. I had an encounter with a guest from Columbia this week. That individual commented about how the economy in Kansas was bad. No jobs, he said, and I reminded him that we are in a recession and the Anglos are competing for the jobs that you want. That is in a realm of possibilities. I had the privilege last night of attending a two-hour training from South Central Kansas Library System. Yes, because of the November vote, we got to stay in the system, and yes, there is a library board officers' pamphlet, packet that has been developed for library board members, and I happened to glance at it, more than glanced, I read it, and it's valuable information and training available to library board members, so you don't have to micromanage a library. That is important training and a benefit for the citizens who come to us from outside of Kansas and tell us how wonderful the library is. Commissioner, we do get compliments. I appreciate your time, attention to this city's matters. I do encourage your citizens to vote. Thank you, and be blessed.
Mr. Colston, Mr. Colston?
Mr. Colston?
Before you sit down, can you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Sorry, and I forgot too, um, the commission neglected to visit with me or any other board member or the library, beginning before April first, and I thought perhaps it was because my phone number had changed, and my phone number is nine one eight, two one two, eight zero five eight, nine one eight, two one two, eight zero five eight. Call or text, and my name is Lloyd Colston, my address is one eight two five North Eighth Street. You know, see, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Elton did sign up to speak as well.
Elton Go, twenty-nine thirty-five, Valley Drive. I'm gonna speak on a splash pad, I am shocked you guys are getting that done for three hundred thousand dollars. I am absolutely shocked. Is there a contingency in that budget for it?
No, just, just built in with our funds, but, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I'm shocked you're getting that done, that is, that is an amazing achievement, especially after what was proposed the first time. So, looks good. Looks like be something my kids will enjoy, so. On the playground, where's they, where are they gonna permit the position at, if you don't mind asking?
Is it, it's where the current playground is, right?
Yeah, it's over by the bathrooms in that current playground area, in that area. I think that's probably all I got, I'm interested in whether our financial summaries, I'll look at here in a minute, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else signed up, so I don't know. Is anyone else here in the audience wishing to speak?
Tiffany, would you pull up the financial summary for, um, I know we really don't have anything to go over on it, but that way you can see it, so.
Yeah, uh, she and I.
Oh, sorry.
I don't, that screen powers the television, so she's.
Got it, nice.
Yeah. I do want to encourage people to look at that, um, financial summary, because Nerfer does generate that to me, uh, once a month, and she works hard at it, making sure it's in there, um, and we want to make sure.
And if you go to the city's website, um, under the finance division page, there's lots of detailed information.
Might look on with you if they don't get it pulled up.
Um, I think he's looking for the financial summary in the back of the packet, so the very last page. And it, it might be a little tough to see on here. I'm like, yeah, we can get you a copy.
Anything else?
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. I want to thank everybody for coming out today.